Okay, we're gonna take, bring the call, the order, uh, the meeting to order, the, uh, March 6th, uh, meeting of the Bucksport Planning Board. Roll call, please.
James Morrison.
Yes.
Brad McDonald.
Here.
David Grant.
Present.
Steve Fies absent.
Edward Belcher.
Here.
George Canton absent. Christopher Johnson is absent.
Review and acceptance of minutes of the February 6th, 2018 meeting.
You wanna, uh, Mr. Chairman, you wanna delay that until we get maybe one or two more members here to vote on it?
Chair report, there is none. Code enforcement officers report.
All I have to report to you is the, the contract, the proposed contract zone change that this board approved and recommended, the council approved was, um, it was brought to the council at their last meeting, Ms. George, for a first reading, and they scheduled a public hearing which will be held tomorrow night, where they're permitting. And I'm assuming they'll act on that afterwards. And if they approve that contract zone change, then Mr. Hawes will be coming back to the planning board at some future date, I'm not sure when, but for subdivision review.
When does the state have anything there, they clear it?
The state has no role in that.
No?
No. If it was insur land zoning, it would need to be approved by DEP, but this, the proposed mobile home park is not insur land zoning. They will, they will have permitting involved in for the mobile home park.
Right.
But they do not need to approve the contract zone change.
This gets into, uh, the area of land that's being disturbed, right? DEP would get involved.
Right, yeah, so there's a site location of development.
Yes, yes.
Permit, uh, I'm not sure if a NRB permit's required, a stormwater management permit.
Mm-hmm.
And DOT has to approve the entrance because it's a state road.
Two entrances, yeah.
Well, yeah, two, yeah.
Supposedly.
That's, that's the plan, right?
Yeah.
Um, I also bring to your attention, if you don't know, that Chris Johnson has resigned from the board, so that explains his absence tonight. And we've advertised in the local paper for people to fill his position, and also, Mr. Morrison, as it has indicated, that he's no longer gonna be serving on the board. So we have, we'll have two empty chairs here to fill. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that very soon.
I, I, I informed Kathy that until she found somebody, I would, I would stay.
Okay, appreciate that.
In this place.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. You wanna go back to the minutes?
Yeah.
So, review and accept the minutes, February 6th, meeting?
Move that the minutes be accepted as submitted. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Good job, Chris.
You're abstaining today, right?
Yes.
Uh, this time, we'll have a limited public forum for an op, it's an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Uh, this is typically for things not on the agenda tonight, so if anyone has anything they wish to say?
I'll give you a quick update on the salmon farm. There will be a public information session on Tuesday, March 20th, 6:00 PM, at the Bucksport Performing Arts Center. It'll be in this Thursday's paper, the, for the next two weeks, it'll be in the paper, so people are aware, but since you guys are here this evening, I thought I'd give you the, uh...
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mike, I have a question for you while you're here. Uh, there was a meeting with ADAPT?
The, um, the ADAPT, um, uh, the ADAPT advisory board, yes.
Okay, um, who attended that?
Uh, the advisory members, so that would be, well, Chris Johnson, Chris Johnson moved himself from it. So it was myself, the town manager, Main Street Bucksport didn't show up, John Paul Alon from Heart and Soul, Nancy Minnet from Heart and Soul, um, Whole Oceans was on the phone, Jeff McGlynn from AIM, Amy Jane McEwen from EPA, um, no one from DEP showed up. Um, the new person who replaced Jim over at Hancock County Planning Commission, Anne Creed, she showed up, um...
So was EMDC there?
Oh, Mike Ludwig from EMDC, yes, he was, he was...
But nobody from Illand showed up?
No, that, um, it was a teleconference call. So the information that's going to be, um, released from that first public open house back in, geez, I think it was October now, um, that's what this meeting was for, so that the advisory board can see what was on there, if there was any, um, anything that was missed, their review, and get that out to the public. They have until March 9th, July, this Friday, to get their input, and so Alon can release that first report. There will be one more, um, one more teleconference meeting of that group, and then the next thing after that will be another public open house from there.
How much time did they actually spend onsite, do you know?
Onsite, uh, the time that they were here, so that week in October, we met on a Wednesday. The open house was on a Tuesday, I believe they left Thursday. When they came out Tuesday, it was the day that we, um, Sue was presented with that award from Eastern Main Development Corporation, and she was the presenter, so some of their time was spent up there.
Best time?
Maybe about 12 to 16 hours. And I don't believe they've been back, so that's my knowledge, they haven't been back since.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, well, at this time, we'll close the limited public forum. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have an application for approval of a proposed new site development on Heritage Park Road, tax map three, lot 54-5. The applicant proposes to construct a 44-foot-by-46-foot two-story building for a muscle packing business, along with related site improvements. Applicant is Pemaquid Muscle Farms LLC.
I have a brief presentation for you, just to help you become familiar with what this is all about. Yeah, so this is a, a muscle packing facility that we call, in our land disorder, is a manufacturing facility, and it's a new site development, there's nothing on the property right now, so when we look at our table of land uses, manufacturing facilities is identified under the production land use category. And the property that we're talking about is in the C3 district, and L2 is short for Level 2 Review, which is a review that comes to the planning board, so that's why we're here tonight. This is a picture of our zoning map, that, you can barely see it, but that says C3 right there, and I've highlighted the property that we're talking about tonight. This, this area that is outlined in dark is, uh, the entire C3 district, which mostly is made up of our industrial park. Now, this is taken from our tax map. Actually, it says map two, but that's this area here, this, this is on map three, so it's map three, lot 54-5, is the tap, the town designation for this lot. And by the way, this is the first lot, first of eight lots in Phase 2, which goes from here out, it's the first lot to be developed. You'll have an application, I think, next month for this lot here. So it's good to see some things happening there. Now, this is just a crude designation of roughly where, uh, the Phase 2 portion of the park is, and this, this is all Phase 1 in here. This part down here actually is a different subdivision, this is a commercial, Wardwell Commercial Subdivision. So our subdivision starts right about here, and you have Berry's Septic Dewater Facility, you have Waterwell 2, you have Central Main Cold Storage, um, you have Hellby Rich.
New Farm.
New Farm, and, and this one.
Boat.
That's, uh, Boatyard, that's, um, French Tree Shipyard.
Right, French Tree Shipyard, okay. So in Phase 1, there's only one lot left, which is right here, and it's mainly been used as a parking lot for a school bus right now, but that, that lot is still owned by the town. And this is a shot I took today looking up into the Phase 2 development, you can see the roads all paved, we have water and sewer lines installed, uh, we're working on getting power, right now, power stops here, but we're working on getting that up into Phase 2. That should be done by January 3rd.
I remember them in Pliscan Day, and, uh, they were running, the power was approved last fall, they were running four to six months behind, S E M P, and I share that information with both of the people who are gonna be coming in, that they'll be four to six months behind if they wanna put three pages to their work.
From, from yesterday, four months, three to four months?
For the businesses, if they want three pages, they have to be looked out, uh, in ours, we got it approved in September.
This shot I took, uh, near the turnaround, just to give you a rough idea of what the lot looks like, obviously, it's vegetated, nothing going on there, and you also see there's a, there's a hydrant at the far end of the, of the park. So I'll just quickly go through some forms here, but, uh, butters were notified in accordance with their heart disorder ordinance, there were, I think, seven butter notices. Everybody who has a business in the park received the notice, as well as people who have shared property lines of the, of the subdivision, received notice. So I didn't really, I didn't get any calls or, or emails from anybody about this, this I did ask for, um, comments from department directors, and heard back from almost everybody, this is a letter I received from Dave Dischew, acting as the Bucksport Wastewater Superintendent, and he states to hear that his facility can handle, um, the 500 gallons per day that's predicted to be, um, drained from the property, and that, uh, projects should have no impact on waste, the wastewater facility or collection system. He did note that should anything change with the operation of this business in the future, such as processing seafood, that they would have to revisit their discharge. As I understand it, now the wastewater generated would mainly be from, from, uh, cleaning, cleaning purposes, this facility. And this is another letter from, oh, it keeps sliding on me. This is, uh, another letter from Dave, acting as the superintendent of the main water company, Bucksport Ranch, and here he says, uh, main water can supply the 500 gallons per day that was stated they will need, they do require backfill prevention device, a double check should be adequate as they're going to install a drainage service line, and also, he suggests that expansion tag on the building be installed to, to help, uh, more consistent pressure. And the applicant actually applied for the sewer permit, and Dave went ahead and issued it, but this is the sewer permit.
Do you have a copy of this, could we get to you?
Uh, I'm not assigning one.
Okay, well, I certainly get a copy. Uh, I'm not su, sure the fee is on page, yeah, so I can, I'll check on that, too. But, uh, he notes in the permit, uh, sewer installation, the connection to the existing service line will need to be inspected before backfill, a grease trap will need to be installed with the building to collect and prevent grease from entering into the sewer distribution system. I'm not sure why he was applying that, if they're really wasting, uh, clean water.
Yeah, it won't be in the grease.
Yeah, love to talk about that.
Okay.
So as part of the application review process, I conduct a application content review, which I did do, and you have a copy that I think in your package, right? I didn't find anything missing, everything that this checklist says should be there is there, or is not applicable. And there's no waivers requested, sometime in the past, you'll get waivers of, um, surveys, but in this case, there is no need for that, because this is a surveyed subdivision, obviously. I heard from, um, so, so we have the sewer department, water department, uh, assessing department has no issues, economic development had no issues, uh, I did not hear from fire department, police department I did hear from, they have no issues with this project. Not sure why I didn't hear from the fire department.
Public Works?
Public Works. Uh...
Right in front of me.
Yeah, I don't recall, I don't recall hearing from Public Works either, unless they, they will need an entrance permit from Public Works, and they have, they have submitted the application for that, but I don't recall getting any comments back from him. So the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions and describe the project that's being proposed, so, uh, do you have any questions for me?
Anybody?
Yeah, so, um, hi, everybody, and I believe you saw me a couple, a few weeks ago, just talking about the project, and, um, so basically, what we're doing is, we're farming mussels down in Frenchman's Bay, we also have a small farm in Stonington, and also one down in South Bristol. And we do all the processing on the boat, and we have mussels that are ready to go into a bag, and we're increasing our production, and we can't bag them on the boat, and we don't have enough time during the day. So we'll be bringing in these, these, what we call exacte totes, they hold about 800 pounds of mussels, we're bringing between five and 10 of them in at a time, putting them in a 20-by-20 cooler, and then processing involves what's, what's called a bin tipper, which tips these mussels into a bagger, and then they go in 10-pound bags, and we'll have an ice machine, we'll, we'll ice them, and then we'll run this as like cold storage distribution center, which will be going, ship, either shipping down to Boston on a common carrier, or going around the area of restaurants with, with our truck. So, um, it, it's a little bit different than your, your typical view of a muscle plant, which would, would have a lot of processing, would be using a lot of water, because that, that will all happen on the ocean, and we'll be just putting it in bags, and then rinsing it down at the end of the day. And then, and, and it'll be a paved lot, um, where the 20-foot wide driveway will go in, and then there'll be a paved road where the trucks will come in and out, and then off to the side will be approximately 100 by 100 square foot area, where we'll be storing muscle ropes, and buoys, and anchors, and other things related to the farm. So that's basically the operation. And then I've got Bill Lane to talk about the details of the site plan. We, we've been out to the site, and I, I saw historically that it was, uh, actually an area where they stored gravel, um, on some of the older maps, so if, there's a little bit of vegetation area in the front, but then as you go back into this area, there's an old access road, and it's all pretty much just flat gravel in here. And then there, there's a, a little hill, um, and then the hill goes back on the other side, and that becomes a wetland over here. So our plan is, is to be away from the wetlands, and we utilize them as kind of interregional in the end of it, and then we would make, there's this little stand of trees here, and there's a, a natural kind of opening where I wrote, it's got a little stand of trees here, where you'd have the driveway coming in, you know, the processing area, and the storage of materials there. And we plan, we plan on employing three people once we're off and running. Uh, there would be one loading up the, on the bagging operation, there'd be another person taking the bags, and, and putting the tags on, and another person putting the boxes, you know, those three people would also be doing things like building muscle ropes, and then running the trucks around, doing all the distribution, which, which allows me to be on the boat, instead of having to do that all myself, so...
And good evening, I'm Bill Lane, from our Land Engineering Camden, and it's been expressed to you, this is, uh, proposed development for a partly 2024 square foot building, 34% 36, um, on lot 5, which is presently undeveloped in Heritage Park, where Buckton American Parks, um, and this park is presently certified, pressurized water and sewer, and we're making connection to the, um, infrastructure for that, and as it's described, with overhead power, uh, as CMP rolls out, deliberated as new customers, uh, the, uh, how, the building is sited approximately 90 feet back in the, in the road, uh, has a paved access drive, has that room for internal movement and circulation, has, uh, uh, two loading bays, uh, one at standard truck head for, one of the reduced type for smaller vehicles, as well as a mandor for access, and adjacent to that mandor, uh, is, uh, provided parking on a paved area. Uh, we, Carter's already described the area to the west of the proposed building for, uh, material storage and buoys, and, and in addition, there will be, uh, a development that's adjacent, um, to the building to, um, house some outdoor equipment, it's, um, it's, uh, cooler, and, uh, compressor, and an ice machine, as well as a dumpster. So that's adjacent to the building, well set back to the road, um, as Carter has expressed, you know, there will be a line of vegetation that will be able to utilize as some screening from the road, and, um, the graving is, is fairly straightforward, we're gonna utilize the high ground on the property, and have as, as gentle a grade for the, uh, ground as possible, and then drain it off to the, to the rear, um, and there's an existing, uh, base map prepared by Pliscan Day, which the topo is derived from, and also the wetlands that has had been located on the subdivision map. As you can see, no impact is proposed for the subdivision, uh, or, excuse me, for the wetlands, and, uh, as part of the project, appropriate erosion, sedimentation control measures are proposed for this construction phase, uh, on the plan, or indicated the presence of sediment barriers, and in addition, there's an narrative provided with the erosion, sedimentation control plan on the detailed sheet. That limits the amount of topsoil that soils can be exposed before they're stabilized, and takes other measures to prevent, and protection of those resources. So that's the consequential, uh, substance of the project, uh, something the board is interested in, would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Right now, both proposed culverts don't really show, uh, where they're draining to at all. One of them's gonna be a sheet flow from the west side to lot, lot 6, and the, uh, culvert at the roadway doesn't show any, uh, ditch lines for this new road.
Topographic map does not have a good, accurate, as-built of how that road is constructed through the ditch line.
Yeah.
It does perceive wet, or, or wet south east, and so the general flow of the whole site is collecting into the drainway, moving down this way.
Yeah, 'cause there's a stream down lower.
Yeah, so those, both those culverts are working in that, and, and as indication of the, the developed areas are, are going to largely direct, uh, towards the rear of the parcel and, and to the wetland.
Building will have, uh, some nightlights exterior?
Yes, there is, uh, exterior, uh, cut-off fixtures mounted over the entrance doors and the two overhead doors, uh, so they would be building-mounted, um...
Yeah.
Underneath the, the hangings buildings, they would be, you know, cut-off fixtures.
No business sign?
At this point, he's not proposed to sign, if there, if he does plan a sign, he will comply with the...
Yeah, there's, there's a, a door that goes into the, um, not the loading base, but the regular office, uh, right by the parking area, there'd be a sign over the door, and I think there's a...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, there's an annotation that does say it's a building-mounted sign that'd be placed over the door.
Yeah, and then, in the, in the park, there's a mandatory sign.
Well, you're tree-lined, gonna pretty much screen the view of the building?
Well, except for...
Till you actually get to the driveway?
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not a dense tree line, I, you know?
Oh, okay.
There's, there's a few small trees, and it's probably, um, you know, eight feet wide, before you open up in that, that old field.
Yeah, we see the roadmap doesn't show sewer water where they finally end, or where that hydrant is, which is beyond your building, I guess.
Correct.
You said that, uh, it'd be eight to 10 totes?
Yeah.
At that, do you intend to expand that to, to any degree?
Not, not currently, um, because it's based on nine muscle rats, which, which should, should produce, um, about a million pounds a year, and that, that value's about a million and a half dollars. And so, our plan was, if we went out on, even two or three days a week, that, that would accomplish that much. And so, the idea would be fixed, if, as we go out on Monday, we bring the eight totes back, and we bring to the plant, they pack it on a Tuesday, and then we go out on Tuesday, bring them in, and then they pack them on Wednesday. So, it'd be basically a three-day-a-week operation, we bring the mussels in, and then they go off to the state. And they have a short shelf life, so we'd be basically cleaning up the whole plant the next day, and we can't clean it anymore for more than a couple of days. And so, so the water is basically, it's gonna be pressured, uh, with fresh water, given the day before, a problem without, we have to clean it down, too. But it would be a certified shelfish, um, shipping facility, so we'll be able to also buy plants from plant diggers if we decide to, or, um, ship other types of products. But our, our plan is, right now, it's a muscle plant, but I think with distribution, we may find that there may be some opportunities to ship other shelfish.
And this, and this building at this size would accommodate that?
Yeah, yeah, because I think we can hold 20 pallets inside the cooler. There's also a, a pan for propane tank, that's gonna be away from the building.
That's not a berry tank, I see ball露s here, so...
Correct.
You're gonna need some type of a slab under that. How much of, uh, the building has a second floor?
Well, the entire first floor, it's got a second floor above it.
Okay, sure.
Basically, just the flat areas for storing boxes, that'll, that'll be the only issue. And then, um, if the access will be from the outside on both sides, uh, we were originally gonna have it on one side, but, um, we had a viewer from the, the builder, he said, for fire, for the system, it's good to have two exits from the upstairs.
So you've gotta lug the boxes outside, down the stairs, and into the plant?
Well, we also have, um, an access store at the end of the, the building, where we can, we can access it, uh, when we're coming off the truck, and, and, but yes, we will be bringing it down, bring it outside.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, the reason is, we can't afford a bigger building, and we don't wanna take up space inside for stairs and stuff like that, so we'll bring, we'll break down a pallet about.
I think he's a dumbwaiter.
Exactly.
What's his name? Sis from... So there's no bathroom in the building?
Yeah, there's a bathroom and an office, which.
On the first floor?
On the first floor.
Is that going on? Okay. Now, your process water go to a trench drain?
Yeah. Do you gentlemen have copies of the building plan?
Yes.
Yeah, that was.
It's in the book.
So it's a 15-foot-long trench drain in the back area. There'll be two doors in the cooler, one door for the product at the front, and then the one goes in the back into the area where the bagging is. And that's where the trench drain is. There'll also be a drain inside the cooler. So it'll have a grade in this, so the water will come down here. It's a 16-foot-long trench drain.
I'm going to pack it somewhere.
Okay.
I believe.
You don't think there would be more floor pitches of the drain? Just in that area?
Yeah, so that's going to have about a six-inch pitch from the edge down into the floor drain. So anything around the processing line will be down here.
Anything else?
George hasn't said anything yet.
Do you have any questions, George? Any other questions?
Well, just, I was thinking, the trench drain is going to be tied into the sanitary? And that other one is, this is a, this another drain in the center of that circle?
Yes. It's in the cooler. It's in the cooler.
Those are all building and plumbing code issues that really, the board doesn't necessarily have to be concerned about. You're looking more at the site development aspects of this project.
Yeah, well, both of those will need traps. Normally not on a, you don't see them on trench drains, but this one will.
Any more questions? Nope. Seems pretty straightforward.
You know, I looked this all over the other day. I was pretty much.
Okay. Thank you. I don't assume we have any issue with bias or conflict of interest or anything? Any public comment? Seeing none? We'll move on to the review, the application review. Environment standards? I don't see anything here that's applicable. Okay, anyone else have any issue?
I'm not quite sure I understand why you wouldn't find any of these things to be applicable.
I wonder about the soil, you know, when they build the building, they have to, when they break ground, there is wetlands there.
And.
And substances to find.
We are talking about how stormwater runoff is addressed, how exposed soils need to be cared for, erosion, sedimentation control. Those things are all documented in the application. So I think you might want to find those applicable.
Yeah. Yeah, they're already addressed, yes.
You might find number four to be not applicable. So this, this project isn't proposing to discharge any water pollutants other than those that might go down the drain. So there's not a risk of impact to surface or subsurface waters. And you might also find the same to be true about number five. There aren't any air pollutants that this project would generate, so. And the same with number six, significant wild habitat. There's not going to be impacted. There's no shoreline zoning, so several would be applicable. But I would suggest you find one, two, and three be applicable. And if you remember, it's been a while since we've done a site plan review. We go through the checklist of all the standards and then when you go back, you go back and do the findings as a separate step. So you're on to special area standards now? On page three?
Yes. Anybody have any issue with number one?
There are known, no, no prehistorical, historical areas that would be impacted.
And there's no scenic, no distance there in there?
Nope.
There's no boat landings, it's not on the water body.
It's not in the flood zone, so number four would be applicable. And.
Five is not.
No areas of unique natural character that would be impactful.
So on to local area standards?
Number one, I think you should find automatically applicable whenever you're talking about a new building, a new site development, like a new building. So you really have to look at it, compare it to whether or not it fits into the development patterns of the locality. In this case, it's an industrial park. You have other similar steel, steel buildings, right? Maybe steel building that has a commercial parent. So you might want to find number one to be applicable.
Two words.
Number one?
Right. Like I said, that should be automatically applicable whenever you're talking about a site development that involves buildings.
I think two would be applicable if we were talking small. A neighborhood or something. Right. This is all the same, no, same type usage, if you will, and character. I guess I'm not overly concerned about that one.
Our land use ordinance does require commercial uses to be shielded or separated, appropriately separated and shielded from a money land use. Our land use ordinance does not require commercial properties to be shielded from other commercial properties, maybe from a residential property, but not from another commercial property, the same development especially. And none of the.
But there's two other properties beyond.
There are no residential properties that about this property. And then no other property in the industrial park that's developed now is shielded from view from any other property, so. So.
Is, what about, would there ever be any odor?
All the odor is on the ocean.
That's a different standard to come to that.
Okay, well, I just, just as any relevant detrimental effect, so.
This is a, this is a visual impact standard. Number two is visual impact. And number three, there's still electromagnetic fields that are generated by this property or development. Artificial lighting, that's applicable because this will have artificial lighting. Noise, noise that you heard outside the building?
Well, there would be in the coolers.
The compressor running?
Yeah.
Trucks in and out. That is a commercial zone. But it is an industrial park, isn't it?
But you want to find it applicable because this project will generate noise. So you need to find that it's going to be appropriate level of noise for the locality.
The muscles are not too noisy by the time you get them in.
So the only thing would be trucks coming in and out.
And the compressors.
How noisy are the compressors? They can't be.
It's just a hums like. I actually have one next to my house for my small Worcester building, and I can't hear it inside the house.
It's for an outside refrigeration.
Yeah, no, I just think it would.
I think there's one of that loves to build one in.
For the most part, your trucks would be coming in during the day.
That's right.
And I hope it's.
I mean, everybody's got trucks coming in and out.
Yeah, industrial park, the ordinance does not set limitations on the hours of operation for any business. But there's an exception, if you're a commercial hauler and you're emptying dumpsters. Our land use ordinance prohibits, actually, it's the building ordinance that prohibits that activity between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM on the day. But commercial, other commercial activities are not regulated as to the hours of operation. The next one, Brian, is where you deal with nuisance orders.
Yeah, I just didn't see that.
So the key is nuisance odor. Is there a nuisance odor, a risk of nuisance odors from this project? You might find that that won't be the case.
I guess we're going to find out. If all goes well, it wouldn't be the case. I just wonder about some of the storage of the gear. That might have a little bit of.
Well, we have what we call pressure washers. Well, we have these 2,500 square foot nets that we put around to keep the dust away. But we have two boats and each one has a pressure washer. So we clean those before we bring them back, and there's no odor.
Okay.
But we might have them to mend. And then the muscle ropes themselves are also dry, so. I mean, I also have those near my house in Fort Smith here.
So basically, this has been mitigated by cleaning offsite?
Sure.
I mean, it's obviously applicable.
Do you ever have any of the muscles come in dead that need to be removed to close them?
Well, we do that all on the boat.
You do?
So the bins are actually going to tip right in the bagging machine, and everything's already inspected. We may have, you know, at the end of the day, a few muscles that fall on the floor or something, but we'll have it come soon.
So the dumpster might be the most odorous.
What you put in the plastic bags?
Yeah, you know, bagging, probably. We have a similar situation just down the street from that lot with a law rolls two, which they process shrimp. And some of their waste gets left outside there.
There's a great odor.
Yeah, on the hot summer days.
How about the crab?
That's what I meant, crab, crab, not shrimp.
Crab and lobster. Number seven? Nothing, none.
No solar panels nearby?
No smoke or dust? No vibration?
You can put them on the roof if you want.
Well, no, this standard ed has to do with the project interfering with solar gains on the buttoned properties.
Is there going to be any smoke or dust or? What kind of heat?
It's going to be propane.
Propane? Space heaters?
On the unit.
Everything pretty wet is bringing in, the wheels are already processed. So I don't, that one probably not applicable, really.
No. Do you have to keep it heated during the times that you're not there?
Say it again, George.
Sorry.
Well, we want to keep it heated to the point where the pipes will be free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to.
Like 45 degrees.
Yeah, shut her down.
Yeah, we'll be keeping the cooler at like 35. So it'll be continually cool.
What did you say, George? I'm sorry.
I was thinking eight probably wouldn't be applicable.
Correct, yeah.
Everybody agrees?
Yep. Nine's probably not.
Nine. Guess you got a boombox buried. So we got one, three, one, four, five, six. That we would figure is applicable.
That's what I had. Everybody agree?
Yep.
On to public safety standards?
I don't think this use has a, opposes any detrimental effects that might present a risk of, to the quantity or quality of drinking water supply. Quantity maybe if they were drawing a tremendous amount of water in the processing of the muscles, but I don't think that's the case.
And the backflow preventers prevent anything in the building from going back into the system anyway?
No. Those are pretty normal.
Right, but it's just.
There's a booster pump station at the corner on 46. You still going to need a booster pump?
I think all lots do, don't they? They're all, the water pressures boosted at that station.
Yeah, I think the only suggestion was the hydromantic tank or pressure tank in the building, which would require any mechanical intervention. Give them a little means of softening the draw. That was a pump made in the road, pretty adequate supply.
So the really isn't, I don't think there's any relevant detrimental effect in water supply, so that would be not applicable. And the same on the next one, too. There's no relevant detrimental effect to energy supply services.
Yeah, there's no energy out there anywhere.
Unless they have a high energy need, and I don't think they do. There's no high energy. So that eliminates the relevancy of that potential detrimental effect. They, they're not in the ballgame. Public safety services.
You want anything more than 240 volts?
No, I think it'd be interesting to have three phases, but it's not a large number of motors.
No, compressor's probably the biggest thing.
Right, so compressor is another machine. And then there's an electric conveyor belt that puts the bagging and then there's a machine that puts the tags on.
No, nothing with public safety?
Well, yeah, see, the land use hasn't, doesn't have any relevant detrimental effects, so would it have an impact, potential impact on public safety services, so I wouldn't say it's applicable. Next one, next one. They said we're generating wastewater, and the wastewater that the treatment plant's accepting for this project will be just general cleaning wastewater, not part of the processing operation, but that could change.
Possibly, yeah, but we don't see it happening. In fact, we were talking to the lobster guy across the street, if he gets a high-pressure processor, we may rent it one day a week, reduce the processing efficiency.
Are you washing the mussels in the facility?
No.
Just, you bring them in and sort them aside?
Uh, they're already sorted, all they, what they do is go through bags. We, we may have a, a small spray of fresh water, just basically-
And smother.
As they go in the conveyor belt, completely clean, but like I say, it would be really small, just thin holes of water, I think, as, as they go up through.
So the processing you do on the boat, boat, this was saltwater?
Exactly.
So they come to the plant with some saltwater or brine in it?
Yeah, they're, they're in the totes, and the totes are drained, and then there would be about two or three inches of ice on it, to keep them cold, and so then we would remove the ice, and then dump it all down, and then spray a little bit of water on them as they come to the plant, and at the end we go off, wash it down the air.
How long does it take the, for the product to reach their, their end user, about, I just wondered if it's just-
Well, it did.
To Boston?
Within a day, typically, and then if they're shipped like down to Boston, if, if we have six thousand pounds or more, we may be able to do a truck early in the morning and get down to Boston the next day. So they have a shelf life of about 10 to 14 days, so usually you like to get them to their, their end location within three, four days. But we've had restaurants in Belfast, for instance, they've had them for 14 days and they're still in good shape, but, but that's because we do all the processing out on the water when it's strongest, and then after they go through, well, there's like 17 hydraulic motors that run the whole processing line, and again, they go in these big tanks for an hour, and we pump water in there, and they recover, and they, we call them purging, they, they get rid of the mud, then we drain them, and then we put the ice on them, so they're all cleaned, washed.
So you have a relatively good-sized boat that you're doing this with, huh?
Yeah, I mean, this boat's 60 by 24, and then the other guy that works with me has a 70-foot boat, so we have a capacity of doing like 30 tons, but I was hoping that if I could do five tons, I'd be happy. Apparently, we're doing one ton, and we're finding we're just break even, so we've had to expand in order to be profitable, because you got the same crew, three people out there, and if you can bring in five tons, it's many, then that's-
Sounds like a lot of work.
Does your production say better here than it is in Southern Maine?
Well, we, you know, we developed this, I got this patent on the submersible muscle raft, and, and after like five years of R and D, we found that the yields were three times as high because, like weather like today, or with a storm coming through, what happens is when the raft is down 10 feet below the surface, it's like this, regardless of what's happening up there, you've got these, these six buoys that have two cubic meters of flotation, and they have the excess buoyancy, and if I need to add air to the raft, I oppose it's going off the surface, and I could bring it back up, and the buoys will go up, but the yield went from 100 pounds of rope to 300 pounds. And all of a sudden, it's like, well, how can I deal with that if I'm only bringing in a ton a day, now I got to be able to up it, and then the question was, well, how can I bag all those on the boat, I don't have enough time to put them in 10-ton bags, and I need a plant, so it came from growing them to a high yield, and then it came to end the process, the final step on shore, but for, for us at least, as I was saying before, we were doing it all ourselves, so we were going out getting a ton, then doing the distribution, doing all the sales the next day, and we couldn't be out on the water growing mussels because we're doing it all, so now what we want to do is go out and bring in five tons, bring it to the plant, and then the people in Buck's Court do all the packing and all the distribution, and I go back out and I get more mussels that way, and it makes it profitable. Makes a big difference, so, you know, the people in Southern Maine are doing okay, but I think the submersible raft is really the way to go, because if this nine-raft thing does what we think it will, and we'll know in three or four years, then you could put ten of these nine-raft farms out, you could put them in Belfast Bay, you could put them anywhere, and you ought to know your pounds of each farm.
Very good.
Somebody's got to do it here.
That's right.
Do it for 37 years, so it's time to make the move.
So we can get back to this, number five?
Yep, we'll take that up.
Six?
Not now, really.
Specific use standards?
There's only one specific use standard in the land use ordinance that's applicable, and that's parking, and for production land uses, the parking requirements are one space per employee and 200 square feet, excuse me, one per, 200 square feet of floor area used for retail sales, and there's no retail sales here, so that's not applicable. So the parking requirement is one space per employee, and you got to have how many employees? Three, and how many parking spaces are shown on this site plan?
Actually, it could be five.
Four, with first one being a handicap space.
So that's it.
Okay.
The next one deals with dimensional standards, and the dimensional standards that are applicable are applicable here are setbacks from property lines, and this district has 10 feet minimum, this site plan shows this meeting that's standard, and then some, I think. That applies to the parking lot as well. And building height, which is 50 feet, I believe, what's the height of this building?
20, not counting the roof.
Actually, I'm wrong about the height limit, it's 75 feet in the C3 district.
So that's not, that's not an issue, so.
The building's under 75 feet.
Yeah, I think it's-
22 with feet.
It's well within, well, under 75, so I wouldn't worry about it.
So that's it for your standards?
Okay. Now we go back through and-
For your findings?
Do the findings, correct. So. And we didn't ask back, you know, as we went through, but we don't think this site visit needed in any-
You can make that determination for the entire application, you know, rather than doing individually, free standard.
Okay. So under environment standards, what do we find?
You might want to first, Mr. Chairman, determine if you do want to conduct a site before you do your findings.
Make a motion we don't do a site visit.
Second.
All, all in favor? All right, now you're in a position to do your findings.
What do we find?
You go do your, back to page two.
Correct, under, under environment standards, so it was, you know, what have we found?
So the proposed land use will have no impact on the environment, as contrary to the purposes of this ordinance.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Put a call for a second.
Anyone want to second that?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? So for special area standards?
You didn't find any of those to be applicable, so there's no need to conduct a findings, then?
Local area standards? What have we found there?
Basically, you said that we were looking at one, four, five, six, and all of them are being mitigated by the information that-
In the packet.
Provided. Was supplied to us by the asset. So I propose to rule that the proposed land use will have no impact on local areas, that is contrary to the purposes of this ordinance.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Public safety standards?
I think we only found that four and five were applicable in this case, and again, they've indicated proper mitigation of any issues that might arise with their land. The only question is, what runoff, follow the natural land? Brought up earlier, something about a grease trap, you may want to pursue whether that's actually required.
Right, I certainly talked to Dave Missu about that, find out why he's making that requirement as part of the sewer permit. I'm assuming he's thinking that there's, there's going to be some grease oils or fats coming out of the drain, but-
No, there's no cooking here or anything.
Unless, is that something they require of any commercial or manufacturing?
Typically, we require only if, only if you're generating grease oils or fats.
So I don't think the-
Think of any reason.
I don't think that the, the fact that it's listed on the permit for a grease trap is going to cause us a problem here, but.
In either case, either way.
Correct.
With or without.
With or without.
Okay. The waistlines have to meet plumbing codes anyways, so.
I believe everything's kind of covered in the plans. So what do we, what have we found?
Well, I move the number two again, that the proposed land use will have no impact on public safety, as contrary to the purposes of this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Specific use standards?
We determined that there was enough parking that we met.
So our finding is?
Proposed land use has met all applicable specific use standards in this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Dimensional standard?
Yes, we determined that they met-
No, there are no applicable dimension objectives, both not required.
Well, there are.
Well, they're setbacks, and they met the setback-
Back in building height.
Building height, and they're under the building height, so.
The proposed land use has met all applicable dimension standards in this ordinance.
Second.
Thank you.
Pretty clear move, isn't it?
Any discussion? All in favor?
So that concludes your review, and because the board has made a positive finding for all applicable standards, that means your, your application is going to be approved.
Now, go forth and preach that this planning board is friendly and receptive to-
Absolutely.
To well-prepared some-
You know, I have to thank Bill for doing an outstanding job on the side of the road.
So we'll have to sit down and talk about the next phase, building permit, permit. He was applying for the entrance permit already, so we'll get that place for you. So whenever you ready to do that.
Company I work for, the Brado.
Really? Did they give you a raise? Take away your job?
No. My new job started yesterday.
So they'll come with it? Check your, it's a different name.
No, it's not, we're trying to de-supply, you know, on the stock market.
So we're going to continue on administrative business? Rich, rich, we're going to continue with our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So the, for admin, there's really nothing, for the planning board necessarily, I can, I give you an update on, on some ordinance work that's underway through the ordinance committee, it's nothing that this board needs to review, but we're in the process of updating chapter five of the town co, which is a building standards and property maintenance ordinance, and the result of the update is it's a complete overhaul of the, of the chapter, and it breaks down the, the chapter, chapter five will become just the building ordinance, the property maintenance part of that chapter is going to be moved to another chapter, newly created chapter in the town co, chapter 13, and they're going to take that up tomorrow night, if, if there is a meeting, if it's not canceled due to the storm, it's going to be Thursday night, Thursday night, not tomorrow night.
Probably can.
Well, it's not looking good right now, but we'll see.
You also referred to that, the hearing?
Contract zone, yes.
Yeah, you, you referred to that, it's going to be tomorrow night also.
I'm sorry, I meant, I meant Thursday.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes, Thursday night, that will be at the council meeting at 7:00, the ordinance committee meets at 6:00, or they're scheduled to meet at 6:00. And, let's see, what else?
Maybe have a public hearing Thursday night, the town council on the, on the contract zone, or will they just review it and then have a public hearing, another meeting?
Well, any, any ordinance that comes to the council, and this is an ordinance because it involves a change to the town zoning map, any ordinance requires two readings by the town council, they held their first reading at the last meeting, and then they scheduled the public hearing and second reading for March 8th, so they do their second reading, then they take public comments, and depending on what public testimony they get, they either go right ahead and act on the ordinance, or if there's a lot of concerns about the content, they might consider sending it back, or taking a, taking a pause and reviewing it further. If they did that, they would actually have to come back and do a third reading, if they, if they want to make changes to it, they would do a third reading, and then make a decision at that point in time if it was appropriate to do so. So there's that, chapter five, property standards, the new chapter, the council's also talking about as seriously considering changing the, the committee structure that they have now, right now they have nine committees, council committees, and the ordinance committee met and talked about that, and has decided to try to reduce it down to four committees, so that's, that's in the works. There's also an interest to adopt a food sovereignty ordinance. The main state legislature adopted a law that allows some types of food businesses to be exempt from state oversight food regulations. If municipalities adopt a local ordinance that recognizes that exemption. So it applies to small-scale businesses like small farms and homemade food production businesses that sell their food directly to the consumer where the food is made. So in most cases, it would be at their home. Whether it be a farm or a house where they make the food products. Right now, those types of businesses are subject to state licensing and oversight inspections. So there was an effort made a few years ago from, I think it was a Blue Hill farmer who wanted to sell his raw milk and was prohibited from doing so unless he met these strict state regulations. And so that's where that law came from. So we're working on that. And that, that will be probably added as another appendix to the town code.
If I may, they also, the young couple that got up and spoke at that meeting also stated that processed things from the farm. In other words, they could make yogurt and, and sell them.
Or cheese.
Yeah, or cheese, or, yeah, a number of different things that I would've thought would've kind of stayed under a lot more regulation, process, things from the farm. But for instance, I sell my eggs, but they're pretty hard to mess up an egg, you know? Sat on it too long, I suppose, you know? But dairy products, like making butter and things like that, I mean, there's standards that kind of have to be watched, you know?
So it's kind of like self-governance. So if, if the town agrees to allow these businesses to become exempt from state regulations, they're pretty much governing themselves. They certain their products are safe for the consumers to use. The, the law was initially adopted to define the direct producer-to-consumer transaction to be a face-to-face transaction, which means that it could take place anywhere. You make the product, take it anywhere, like a farmer's market is for example. And you, as long as you're selling, the producer's selling directly to the consumer. That's how the law was originally worded, and it applied to any food product. But it's been changed. They had to come back and amend it because the federal, the federal agencies threatened to, I don't know, sue, sue the state or whatever about the exemptions, that the exemptions were applied to meat and poultry. And, and they, they, they didn't want that. So, so the end result is, the law was amended to exclude producers of meat and poultry products from that exemption, the sovereignty exemption. Another thing that was clarified was the definition of producer-to-consumer transaction. It now reads that the transaction has to take place where the food is, is made. So that rules out now taking your, your homemade bread, selling it at the farmer's market. You have to sell it at your home. So our, our, there's been some disagreement about that. There are people out there that, that think that the law could be interpreted to allow a municipality to include farmer's markets or other events as places where you can have the producer-to-consumer transaction. But MMA attorneys say no, no, that that's not how the law should be interpreted. So we're not gonna interpret it that way in our food sovereignty ordinance.
Again, so, so I sell my eggs door-to-door. I, I have to sell them at my farm now under these new regulations?
I don't know, is an egg is processed anymore in the care room?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Jim, if, if an egg would be considered a food. Eggs are food, obviously. I'm not sure how to answer that question. I'll look into it.
It isn't, it isn't an egg that could be infected until it's broken open?
Yeah, there's that risk. If you have a slight crack in an egg, it could allow bacteria to find its way in.
Yeah, my consumers don't want the cracked ones anyway. Eating them myselfs.
Sometimes you buy a dozen eggs at the store and find this one, pull one out and it's got a crack you can see. So what do you do with it? Throw it out or?
I don't know, salmonella doesn't sound like anything I'd like to.
But I'll look into that question, Jim, and let you know about being able to take your eggs door-to-door.
If I can, I'm gonna tell the girls upstairs, you set them. You can deal with that.
But you, but to sell eggs, I don't think, does that require a state food license?
Not that I have a new one.
Yeah, it may not. So that's what's in the works. We're also trying to get the schedule of fees finalized, so. When we amend the ordinances, and we'll eventually do it to the land use ordinance, we're taking the fees out of the ordinances and putting them in the schedule of fees. So that if a change is necessary to a fee, it can be done without having to go through the ordinance process, ordinance amendment. So we're doing that to chapter five right now that has fees for building permits. We're taking those out and referring the reader of the ordinance to chapter five to determine what the fees are. I mean, to, to the schedule of fees, to determine what the fees are. But we gotta get that, the council hasn't acted yet on approving the schedule of fees, so we gotta get that done. We're also trying to, we started, we started to amend the solid waste flow control ordinance. Actually, we did amend the ordinance. That's been overhauled, is updated. But we took, out of the ordinance, we took out the transfer station rules and the fees. And put them in a separate document that would eventually find its way into the new town's manual of rules and policies. That was something new that the charter, the charter was amended last year to recognize that we now have a manual of rules and policies. So the transfer station rules, for example, would go in that manual. But the town has not yet approved the, the new transfer station rules or the new schedule of fees. They, they table that until, I guess, until the fiber right facility is finished, up and running. And if, if any changes are necessary to deal with fees, they could be addressed before they adopted the, the fee. So that even though the, the flow control ordinance is new, we still are using the old transfer station rules that were in the old ordinance. And the old set of fees are still in effect and being used until they figure out what to do with the, the new proposed ones. So that's the status of affairs in the Bucksport town code right now. There's still a lot more work to do in the town code. In terms of bringing things up to date, some parts of the code have been touched for decades and are outdated and contain inaccurate information. So it's an ongoing process. Some of which will come back to you. The land disordinance will be amended again in the not-too-distant future to deal with some other things that need to be taken, taken up. As a matter of fact, I think, I think when we do the food sovereignty ordinance, I think it's gonna be, we're gonna have to refer to it in the land disorder because it's only gonna, it's only gonna pertain to home-based agriculture, which is essentially, it's a, it's a small farm. It's a, no, it's not a small farm. It's a, it's a home that raises vegetables, fruits, or animals for their own consumption. And they may have excess that they can't consume or preserve or store that they could sell. That's called home-based agriculture. You're raising the stuff mainly for your own use, but if you have excess, it's okay to sell it. So the food sovereignty ordinance will apply to that type of operation and also to home-based food production businesses, which are, again, small-scale, home-based business by, by its nature is very small-scale, where you've got somebody who's got a place in their home or in the kitchen where they're baking muffins or bread or, or making jellies or jams that they wanna sell. That also will be exempt under the food sovereignty law, as long as they're selling those products at their home.
Do they get inspected at all?
Well, they were subject to state licensing, so theoretically, they're supposed to be an inspector that comes by and checks out their, their facility. So it's not gonna apply to food businesses that have storefronts like the bakery we have here in Main Street. Any business that sells food here, even though they may make it there, which is the bakery, they bake bread there. So they're, so that, that business is making some food product right there and selling it directly face-to-face to the consumers, but that won't be exempt.
It won't be.
Won't be, no. They were still the subject to licensing by the state.
Is the, is the Friars business anything that we're gonna have to look at or?
That was a change of use, George, that I permitted, so.
Is that in the flower shop or? I didn't even know where's the.
Tobacco shop or the flower shop?
Isn't that where the tattoo place was?
Yeah, there was a tanning salon there. I think there was a tattoo business there one time, too.
So it's on the riverside, then?
Yeah. And they are very close to opening. Their last step is to get their food license from the town council. Hopefully, that'll happen this Thursday. That's, that's the last approval they'll need before they can open for business.
They've closed down there, are they? Yeah.
But they're gonna continue baking. They have, they have a kitchen in their home and they're gonna be continuing baking. But they won't be exempt from licensing because they're bringing their baked goods from their home to the store. So they'll have to get, maintain, they have a license now, they just need to maintain it. But.
Red and blue.
There's broads, that's where the money is.
Yes, we are being recorded, yes.
Jim, you shouldn't talk like that.
I'll try to control myself when we're on in.
Anything else? Therefore, move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?